We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone to our September 4th, City of Palacca Special Call Commission Meeting, to Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borland, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting, the City Commission, is to be called, to be held at the regular meeting place of the City Commission, at City Hall 201 North Second Street. And for the City of Palacca, to begin at 5:00 PM on Friday, September 6th, 2019. The purpose of the meeting is to consider the following items: to approve the list of finalist candidates for the position of Palacca City Manager; to approve a trial period for once-per-week garbage collection; to approve approval of opioid epidemic cost recovery and litigation. Please go in yourselves accordingly. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Warren?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Here.
All members are present, and if you have a question, you can have a call.
We're gonna go ahead and stand before your dedication and pledge. I'm gonna ask Mr. Campbell if he would leave us in both.
If you will by your head. There have been followed by, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here today, God, as we go forth with this meeting, the act that you give us the knowledge and understanding that will make, so that we're able to make the best decisions for this community. We pray these prayers in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now moving to item one of the agenda, which is our public comments. Is there anyone here for public comments? If you wish to speak for a public comment, please fill out a yellow card in the back of the room, so that we will have an accurate record of your appearance today. I've got one speaker for general items, Mr. Robbie Correa. All comments will be limited to three minutes, no action will be taken on topics of discussion.
Robbie Correa, 118 Dodge Street, Palacca. I just wanted to let folks know that we got notification from the State Historical Preservation Office, that the Hotel James has been placed on the National Register of Historic Places. Thank you.
Good news. Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Seem no one with close public comment?
... consideration for the city manager position of Palacca. All of the candidates presented can do the job. I am confident they can all do the job. The rest is up to you, how we proceed.
Any comments or questions from the commission? Since everybody's jumping to speak, I will say, again, kudos to you, Ms. Heather Martin and the Mercer Group, for the work that you guys have done in providing this slate of candidates as finalists thus far. One of the things that we talked about throughout the process was the ability to be able to add additional candidates for consideration. Over the last couple of months, I've had an opportunity to work closely with Lee Garner, and I've watched his interaction with staff, I've watched his ability to come in, negotiate union contracts with the fire department, and get us to a point to be able to provide wisdom and experience in areas of law enforcement and some of the other areas here. I am, I would like to see Lee Garner's name added to that list. He fits Palacca in what we're doing here, and I think he just provides a certain necessary for us to have him in consideration for the final position. Any comments from the commission as it relates to my suggestion?
I would like to, Mr. Garner, to see what your thoughts are.
I'd be glad to be your permanent city manager selected. And I could sit here tonight, and if selected, I'd be glad to sign a minimum of a two-year contract agreement, so that you've got two years of no turbulence or whatever at all when we go from there. So I'm really enjoying it, and I feel like it's a place I can enjoy the rest of my ten years of working.
I have a question, and I know we've had the conversation, but I thought that we did make the recommendation that we would not be adding, and there's a lot of understandings that is in the contract, how would that affect being added?
You made a recommendation of what?
Within the contract, it states that he would not be seeking long-term employment?
That the interim would not be eligible for, I think, I think it was in, the interim would not be eligible for permanent position, or something like that.
I can tell you that Mr. Garner did not apply. But it is at the discretion of the commission to add any candidates that they wish to see added to the list.
I'm not offering that in one way or the other, as to the wisdom of it. From a legal perspective, I don't think that there's a prohibition or a bar to doing it. The contract between Mr. Garner and the city is one which could be amended by mutual agreement. If both parties wish that contract amended, so that the clause, and I don't have the contract in front of me, but if the clause in the contract that states that he won't seek permanent position, then that clause can be eliminated from the contract by mutual agreement of the city and Mr. Garner, because those are the two contracting parties. I don't believe that there would be any unstoppable argument to be applied, since he's being added to the list for your consideration, and you could proceed in a number of different ways, should you choose to. You could just add his name to the list, you could add him, and ask that he also be interviewed by the selection group, at your choice. But from a legal perspective, and I've been thinking about it since the mayor made the statement, as to whether there was anything that we had done that could be considered a flaw in the process to those who did apply, and I don't think there is. I mean, I think that we don't make a commitment when you solicit applications, I don't think you're making a commitment that you're going to choose necessarily from those who apply. So I'll leave it at that.
Any further comments from the commission?
So this is, if we do this, it's just going to be added to the list, and it talks to all of the rest of the candidates, so would that be what you're doing?
Correct. So I'll entertain a motion at this time, but if not, I'll pass the gavel and make the motion myself.
I make the motion that he be added for, and to be with the rest of the candidates.
Second.
There's a motion for the second, after any further discussion?
Of course.
Seeing none of questions called, all in favor, say aye. Propose, motion carries unanimously. And so, next up is when, is coordinating the interview schedule?
The question is, does the commission wish to interview all six candidates? Or do you wish to narrow down based upon the materials that you were given approximately two weeks ago? You have the resumes of all, and the materials that we have from them. You can choose to interview all six, or however many that you wish to interview.
Any comments from the commission? Again, I think, in an effort to continually be thorough throughout the process, based upon your recommendations, it would be necessary, it would be, in my opinion, that we interview all six candidates.
I will notify them.
So, it's up to the commission. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I agree to go ahead and vote, and interview six candidates also, so that we can all get a chance to have, get to know them, and what we have on the table.
Commissioner Warren?
Can I quote that same sentiment?
Vice Mayor?
It's fine.
Okay, by consensus, we'll go ahead and interview all six candidates. And our next step is wait for you to coordinate dates and times for such.
At this time, based on the schedule that I presented to you a couple of weeks ago, I proposed that we bring them in the week of September 23rd. Now...
And I'll be out of town as well.
Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner McCaskill are gonna miss their conference, so if we find our first available date thereafter.
Okay, we'll do that.
And so, some coordination to get this together. Are there any dates that you guys will be unavailable the following week? Or are you available, maybe we could try to coordinate within that, the next period? And we'll just continue to get communications to move forward. Any other questions for Ms. Heather Martin? So again, we thank you very much.
Thank you, it's been my pleasure.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing from you soon. Moving forward, item number three, Mr. Griffith. Proposed 90-day trial for once-per-week garbage collection. I've kept four cards that relates to this act, to this item, so I will let Mr. Griffith give his presentation prior to having a public comment.
Commissioners, thank you for letting staff bring this item up on tonight's agenda. I know it was late notice. Commissioners, thank you for letting staff bring this item before you tonight. Can't hear me?
I don't think they can.
There are times of charm. I'll have a question for you tomorrow morning later. Thank you for letting us bring this item before you tonight. With the storm, staff anticipated having to bring forward a request to suspend residential collection to facilitate cleanup. Fortunately, we were spared, we had to not have to perform that task over the next month or so. But it did bring this conversation forward again eternally, and it's something that we have been talking about for a couple of years now. And we've been looking into the feasibility of this, and the benefits of it. So if you will, I'd like to just go over a little background information. Feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. And I do have Mr. Chandler with me tonight, he's hiding back there in the corner. All right. So the reason we want to bring this conversation forward is we have, we have seen some inefficiencies. We want to have an open dialogue with the commission and the public to get some feedback, to see what the best path forward is. And we think it's the most responsible thing to kind of bring these inefficiencies and these cost-saving ideas to your attention. Now, the objectives of this conversation is to do a number of things, but the most important are to maximize the cleanliness and attractiveness of the city, and to provide the best service for the lowest cost to our citizens. Now Ed knows this, he knows all the routes, he's got them memorized, but I can tell you there's two factors that I look at when I look at the routes. That is, the vehicle capacity, you know, the number of staff, you know, what we can actually pick up, and then the route capacity. You know, how many stops can you efficiently service? These pictures, Mr. Chandler was so kind, I should back up, that's my garbage can today, that's one week's worth of trash, with two kids and two adults. These are some examples of what we saw this week. It has been a week since we've picked up garbage in the city. Now, yes, there are some cans that are overflowing, there are some households that have six or more people living in them. Not everybody has a two-person, a three-person, or a four-person household, but we believe we've got ways to address that concern. A little bit more background. Right now, we've got an average of about 300 and, 3,600, 3,669 residential accounts. We've got two trucks that run twice a week, so that's four routes, and we run that over four days. On top of that, we have two clamshells that service yard debris in both ways. And Ms. Becker can chime in at any time here, she assisted me with putting these numbers together. We looked at the cost, he's got a copy right here. So, to kind of break this down, if you can imagine, you've got a truck, or two trucks, that run the same route twice a week, but we're picking up, we're picking up less waste the second time every week. So you're running the same amount of hours on that machine, you're running the same amount of miles, and you're basically decreasing the life cycle of that vehicle. We calculated the number of miles and hours in addition that you run to service twice a week, even though people don't put their can out twice a week, not everyone does. Some people leave it by the road, for that matter. Sometimes it's empty when we get to it. You're not supposed to do that, Mayor. Something else we'll touch on. Just the capital reserves savings alone, by pushing the replacement from eight to 13 years, is nearly $30,000 a year. That's $8.10 per customer a year. That's the real savings. And 13 years is conservative. Based upon the miles, we could push that to 15, but there's other considerations, too. You're not just putting paper goods in there, there's wet stuff, there's stuff that adds to the wear and tear of the body of the machine. All right, we'll move on to the next slide, here we go. Okay. Now, this was a little bit easier, the estimated fuel savings. So we calculated the actual cost for these trucks, and the fuel, the annual tire savings, and the service savings per year, because we do a service about every 600 hours on these machines, and if you're putting less hours, the frequency of service will go down as well. That comes up to another $5.26 that we can take off of somebody's cost annually. These are the two service areas. So if you can imagine, that blue area, cut that in half, that red area, cut that in half, those are our routes. You've got your Monday, Thursday, and your Tuesday, Friday. Some pretty big geographical areas. Currently, we're at an average of 917 stops per route. If you were to just do that, that means that they would be out there for about eight or nine hours. That shift is a little bit too long. We need to be somewhere in the 600 range, and maybe even a little bit lower, if we're concerned about future growth. And I think that is a concern of this commission. We want to be able to take on additional service for additional customers, if and when we do see some growth, without seeing those expenses skyrocket for another truck at 250 grand, and a driver at $14 an hour, and two labors at $11 an hour. So again, to clarify, we're not talking about removing any positions or any staff, we're just talking about increasing some efficiencies, and providing a better service at a lower cost.
I want to ask you, as you lower that cost, will it go back to the citizens' yield will go down?
Yes, ma'am, and Ms. Becker's gonna touch on that in a couple more slides. Just some quick numbers, we did look at the tonnage on the vehicles, and what you can see is as you go through the week on 84 and 87, in the second column, the tonnage goes down, the capacity increases, and the number of hours goes down. But what this also depicts is, not everybody's putting their can out twice a week, somebody misses Monday, they put it out Thursday. Or if they leave their can, like they do at Sugar Hill Raxdale by the side of the road, it's empty on Monday, or empty on Thursday, and full on Monday. So, you know, there's some inefficiencies here, but we're still driving those miles, and putting those hours on those machines to go to those cans, and they're not even full. More hours. Now, this number isn't something that you would immediately see a cost savings on. This is factored based upon the truck cost. This is the annual cost for those two trucks to do a double run. So you're spending that $50,000, one way or another. That's what it costs to send those trucks out to the same area twice a week.
Vice Mayor?
So, in red, you'll see Palacca 1920 is the $19 monthly fee that we propose for this budget fiscal year. Doing some of the calculations, looking at some of the other cities, Mr. Griffith has called a few of the other. We, Palacca Alternative is down at the bottom in yellow, we can see that we could drop a dollar monthly off, and we can increase your capacity for yard collection allowance. So what this means for us is, you have to understand that expenditures, we're always trying to look for more efficiencies. So although a dollar doesn't sound like a lot to some of the citizens, whenever you think about percentage increases, that, it's huge. I believe it was, what is it, 14% increase is what the $19 is, from where you currently are. We have to keep in mind that each year, sanitation runs as a business operation. We have staff to pay, we have operational expenditures to cover. Therefore, each year, you're going to see an automatic increase in expenditures, just like anybody does in their household, it's just a natural occurrence. So what we're hoping to do, sooner rather than later, we've ran numbers, and we are going to be able to have residential and commercial meet their rate increases to match expenditure increases. So right now, or in the past, you've seen us doing a catch-up increase. We're trying to make sure that we, our expenditures aren't outpacing our revenues, which they have done in the past. What we're trying to do is get it to where, okay, we expect increase for expenditures 2%, which is, you know, 2% to 3%, what people normally see, we only want to increase your revenue, or your rate increases by that. We're trying to make sure that we correct what has happened in the past, because that has not been done. And we are there, I mean, we're close to being at this point. And so, due to these efficiencies that Mr. Griffith has talked about, by decreasing your, the routes, we're able to decrease expenditures, therefore, or decreasing your rates. Now, for that $18, I know you, there's a lot of different numbers in there, but Mr. Griffith can talk to why we are closer to the city of Ocala versus, you know, Keystone Heights or something. What are we giving the citizens for the $18, Mr. Griffith?
So that's some of the stuff that I want to talk about, the benefits of this. So our weekly yard debris collection capacity is higher than some other areas, we do it weekly instead of bi-weekly. We want to provide additional services, like general litter pickup throughout the city. We want to be able to do more clean sweeps of areas. We get a lot of tires by the roadside, grocery carts, some illegal dumping, you know, stuff that, you know, it's kind of hard to allocate resources to when these guys are on the trucks five days a week. That's the kind of thing that you get for that additional cost.
Right. I think it's important, and why I wanted to make sure that he noted that, is that it's important that our, you see our city, our county, we're in a movement, we can see a movement of everybody wanting to do great things in the city and county. One of the things is removing the blight. And so therefore, whenever you drive around this town, not only is it making sure your garbage cans are at your house and not sitting out all week long, or making sure those tires aren't in the, this is going to allow for the crews to actually run efficient routes, so they're only working their eight hours, or they're, it's better for morale for employees. But they also are going to be able to do that additional litter cleanup that we don't see right now taking place.
So she kind of went over some of my conclusions on the next slide.
You're welcome.
And you've covered some of this, too. What do we gain from this? Some route efficiencies, again, like I said earlier, we're over 900 stops on each route right now. You know, if it's a heavy day, that could be 10, 11, 12 hours, or even greater. If it's a light day, that's seven or eight hours. But we need to be in that six to seven hour range, so that we have some capacity for future growth. The other thing is, and you touched on employee morale, we're trying to find opportunities to foster growth in our employees. I don't have any scheduled, scheduled time, nor does Ed, for his employees, unless it's overtime, or we make the citizens suffer with, you know, delivery and the service, to do scheduled training. You know, right now, we have to basically find a day when it's light, we know yard debris is only going to take a couple hours just to be able to do that. We want to be able to do that stuff on a more proactive basis. And again, I can tell you, when I drive the city, there are a lot of things I see that I wish we could do better, and one of those things is just general litter pickup and the appearance of the city. So we're not proposing this so that we have to do less work, it's so that we can do our work a little bit more efficiently. That's all we're asking. Do you have any questions?
No.
Go ahead.
I don't have any questions, but I really like to thank y'all, and appreciate y'all for doing that. I mean, always looking at efficiencies and effectiveness, what we need in order, what we give back to our community as it relates to cost of services. You can't ask for much more than, normally, when you, when you find, like, government work, state work, it's way different than the private sector, where they look at the bottom line, and what you, what you guys are doing, you've got somewhat of a mix as it relates to being able to operate efficiently, and effective, and improving your processes, being able to add value to the organization. So we certainly appreciate all y'all doing.
Before we move on to comment, I would just like to commend Mr. Griffith, because we were talking through this, and one of his, yes, and Mr. Chandler, and one of the things, he's thought, they've thought this through, really, and they're asking for a trial run. This is not implemented as stone, they want a trial run, so that they can see, what do the customers say, what do the citizens say, how do the employees react to this? Is it something that, in three months, if you do a 90-day, that's normally my number, you know, I need a quarter to see its numbers. So this is something that he's wanting to live, if he's wanting to roll this out, you know, say fiscal year October, he has enough time to make the citizens aware, train his employees, let's talk about the changes that we're going through. So this is something that has been thought through, it's not just, hey, let's try this, let's implement it and go. He really wants to see feedback from everybody, and I think that's why he's asking for this trial run.
I do know during the legal cities, they have what they call smart cities, and what they're doing now, some cities have already implemented, like waste pickup, where when they throw trash in the bins, or whatever, it has, I think, either weight, or some, some form of technology to let you know what levels, or how much weight is in each one of those canisters. So those are the type things that, you know, it's futuristic, some cities have already implemented it, but I think that's something that we can probably look at in the near future. But what you guys are doing with the two week, I mean, two, two times a week pickup, and you're going back picking up an empty can that you don't need to be picking up. So I really commend y'all for doing that. I'm done.
Okay, we're gonna move to our speakers, I've got some questions.
No, I don't want to hear some of the comments.
We're gonna hear some of the comments. First up is Ms. Kitchen. As you come forward, you're limited to three minutes on this topic for your public comment. I will start the clock and give you, I will let you know when you're done, so your last 30 seconds.
I believe Ms. Kitchen's case only sounds 12 straight. Mayor, you've always done a different sort of perception of our city, and how it looks clean, you weren't a group to clean up the city, and you've done a marvelous job on it. And I might point out, that each neighborhood you clean up, by the next day, the garbage is back again, but that's not your fault. If you look at the county residents and talk to them, you will find out that those cans are overflowing into the streets and the roads of the county. I've had numerous comments on that, from the county residents, they're extremely unhappy. In addition, there's wild animals like bears and coons and various things getting into that garbage. As to the grocery carts, they can be recycled. Mr. Griffith told me last week, when I had one picked up for the first time in five years, in my neighborhood, they recycle them. That $1.28 seven-month savings will be offset by your automatic 10% yearly increase that you voted on two years ago. You're gonna get worse services for more money. The morale of your employees may be better, but the morale of your citizens will not be better. One-week pickup will not encourage people to move into the city, the two times a week pickup is an incentive to bring people and development into the city. Fuel savings, you all have your own private gas tank, you buy that wholesale from a local company. I don't think there's any issue on the fuel savings. The, mostly illegal dumping is done on private property, and the city cannot own private property, basically. So I encourage you not to do this, even on a trial basis, it's been tried before, it was turned down, the citizens aren't gonna like it, it's not a good idea. And if some people have empty dumpsters, that's fine, let the city make it, I noted that, and only go to those places once a week, or go past them. But this is going to be a major problem for the city, it will not make it look attractive, and this is a very bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Marsha Lane.
Marsha Lane, 210 East Forest Park Drive.
Marsha Lane, 210 East Forest Park Drive. Clarifying me, are we talking just residents?
Yes.
No businesses. So businesses can be picked up five days a week?
Five or six days, whatever day.
So while I sympathize with who you went to look at, I drove around the same day I heard about this on my way to work and saw overflowing garbage cans, and I'm just driving along St. John's Avenue. If you want to get citizen input truly, there are better times to do it than Friday afternoon at 5:00 p.m. on a week most of us have spent waiting for a hurricane to take us out. I think that that's the public relations nightmare you started. And they're going, we're going to remember that, I'll just tell you. No matter what you.
What does that mean?
There you go. If the general litter pickup, I, on Wednesdays, which is normally when trash gets picked up, yard trash and all that, I can't not tell you how many times I have driven by the, your trucks and driven by my house and left a trash pile that just kept getting bigger. I've sent some of your pictures through the air, and some of my neighbors have called because the same thing happens to them. It would be great if you could take care of that problem, but you have a certain amount of trucks and a certain amount of people. There is, since this is just residential, you really do need to take in account, we need, we have just, the Keep Puttin' Beautiful of the county has just hired Nicole Grace as their new Keep Puttin' Beautiful person. She has some programs I know, and much of it has to do with changing how people look at trash and garbage and all pickup. Part of it, I, with the litter situation, I will remind you that Kay Popovich, who used to be director, she had every kid in this county trained to pick up trash and to make their parents stop if they threw out trash. That is far more important than cutting off the, how much money you're going to save is really pretty minimal. And when you want to bring in businesses, it does not look good to have overflowing trash cans. I don't think it makes a good impression. I appreciate the fact that y'all are looking into this, but I think there are other solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Riker. I didn't butcher it, did I?
Riker.
Riker. I butchered it.
That's my last name.
I guarantee three per day.
Yeah, I'm kind of new here in Puttin' Up Cappy. Carlos Riker, I live 1301 Cleveland Avenue, I know that. And I've only been here for less than two years. And for me, it's kind of, I'm kind of concerned, like, I just learned about this like yesterday or something like that. I think it's a great idea that they're trying to save money. But if they're going to try to save money and only give like, like a dollar off a month, that doesn't really make any sense to me, because that, that doesn't even seem like the right amount. If you're going to like only pick up once a week, and I do see, some of my neighbors, I got like hardly any garbage, because I'm just like one person. But I've got some neighbors right down the street, and there are things like Folton can't close their trash can every, every day, like every time they're going to get things up. I just, on, on the basis of how much we pay for the garbage pickup, I calculated that each pickup is only like a dollar eighty-five that we pay for each pickup. Every time they come by to pick up, we pay a dollar eighty-five for that pickup. So if they, if they don't pick up, they only pick up four times a month, we should only have to pay an eight thirty-two then, for a paying per pickup kind of thing. That doesn't sound like a lot, but I checked on our street when they picked up today. It took them, we've got 11 houses just on our street, that's $20.35 that we paid. But then the pickup, it took them less than five minutes. It took them like four minutes to pick up the garbage on our street. So they're getting $20.35 to pick up the garbage right there. I see that they divided it into two parts. I think if we're going to get discounts, I think the people that are paying for the water and the sewage and the garbage and the landfill, taxes and all the other stuff should get a little bit more than a discount. I think I heard you say we'll take a dollar off, or something like that? Sounds like not enough. Anyways, I just wanted to come and say something. I usually do this kind of stuff, but I know that none of my neighbors, I mentioned a couple of my neighbors, and they're like, I can't go. And I was like, well, I'm going to go, and I'm going to say something, because I think it's a good idea to try to get, you know, save some money, but maybe the customer should save a little bit more, too, if we're all saving. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next up, Tracy McCready.
If you mess that up, you're in trouble.
Your handwriting's about as bad as mine.
Hello, my dog bit my finger, that's why it's bad. My name is, my name is Tracy McCready, and I live at 309 South 13th Street. And, well, I didn't, I didn't know Jonathan was going to speak, so you didn't answer a lot of questions. But as far as the savings, for me, it just doesn't compete for a dollar a month savings than, I mean, that just tells me that I'd rather have a garbage picked up twice a week. I live in a high-traffic residential area, and for lack of better words, there are so many inconsiderate, senseless slobs that throw their trash out on our street and road. So every morning and every evening when I come home, I have to pick up trash. Half the trash in my barrel is from people throwing their crap out on the street. So that's one of my concerns for sure. And I do have to say, as far as the meeting goes, yeah, having it right after the hurricane and it's football on Friday, you know, it's not really the best idea.
Game canceled. Game canceled, so they're right there.
But anyways, everything else, you pretty much hit on, so that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, David Bimke. You're my third butcher, are you there?
No, I wouldn't call it that. There have been much worse. I'm David Banky, I live at 919 South 15th Street, just a couple blocks over from her. And as she mentioned, we have a real problem of slops in the neighborhood. And especially here with the medical clinic there, and a lot of cars racing up and down the streets. But anyway, I think it's a wonderful idea. It's just my wife and I and two dogs. We currently put our can out once every two weeks, and that's all we need now. It does come with us having to contribute a little bit. We recycle. My wife is a gardener, and therefore she composts. So there's a huge amount of our waste that goes right out, and it takes some effort. My only concern would be with anybody that uses a lot of glass. I don't know if, you know, because it's heavy and it doesn't recycle. I know I take mine up to the dump itself and put it up there in the recycle bins, but that would be the only area that should be tough. And on my way over here, I went past the playground down the street. The first thing I thought of when that playground was being built, a lot of the old timers, I've only been here 10 years, a lot of the old timers said they've never seen such a bad idea in this city in their life. Well, when I came by, it was full of kids. It's full of kids every day. We just need to sell this idea in a positive fashion, and it can work. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you. I think he brings up a very interesting point. There's been conversation that we just recently had, I sit on the Solid Waste Disposal Committee, there's been some conversation about glass recycling and about opportunities that are there from a recycling standpoint, particularly around the state. So that's something that we'll hear more about in the coming months, and different opportunities that we have for recycling. Is there anyone else here for public comment on this issue? You can do it, you can kind of come up now and fill out later. Ms. Correa.
Robbie Correa, $118. I think it's a great idea, and I think it's a good thing to try. I actually suggested several years ago to City Manager, a few years ago. We certainly need some help cleaning up the city. If the staff's time can be allocated for that, that would be great. Jacksonville, and it's a private company that does this, has curbside composting. I also have a compost bin, and I also do a lot of recycling, so I probably put my can out once a month. It is just me and a couple of dogs. But I, you know, I think there are other ways to address some of the issues so we don't have the overflowing mess. And if people followed City Wonders and put their trash cans off street side, that'd be wonderful. So anyway, I think it's a great idea.
Does that comment work for us? Any other speakers at this time? Seeing none, we're closed to public comment. Any comments for the commission?
Yes, personally, I think it's a good idea. I also spoke to a few of my coworkers that I know that live in the city, as well as some of my neighbors. Again, mixed reviews, but I'll be, I prefer it to be remembered for trying versus not trying. And again, we have citizens that sit on both sides, but again, it's a trial, which means we have the option to go back and change if it's not fitting. So again, we have a service to do to those who want to see it happen, and we have to also make sure that we take into consideration those that don't. So I think that's where we are at this point.
Any other comments?
I want to, want to, I think we tried this once before, when the county decided they wanted to job out there, garbage pickup. And I just want to bring that to your attention. They pick up once a month?
Once a week.
I mean, once a week, they pick up, they pick up twice a week. I just want to put that on your radar, because we should be looking at everything that goes on. I think that I'd like to know a little bit more about it, and I'd like to see how much our citizens will benefit from having the price drop, and they get some benefit from it. And I'd like to make sure we do that.
Commission, McCrea.
Personally, when I first heard about it, I wasn't excited about it. However, I had realized that I sit on this diocese for many others as well. So I kind of reached out and spoke to a few other, you know, residents and found out, to find out what their thoughts are, and I think it's a great idea. Something that's not set in stone, it's something that we can come back to the table, reconsider if it doesn't work out. So personally, I think we should go ahead and go with it. Come back and revamp if we have to.
Commissioner, Moore.
Yeah, I personally think it's a good idea. I mean, I'm just looking at from my perspective and hearing from others, and also just listening to things that I've heard throughout the state. I mean, the amount of ways that we generate, even on a two-week basis at my house, is not, is minimal. So it's just a trial, it's not something that we're putting in stone. We can always reverse back. So again, I don't want to just cut out a possibly good idea, we need to make that consideration. So I like to take that into consideration, and we can always reverse it.
Mr. Correa.
I heard somebody was talking about the $1 a month, but if you take it citywide, I think it showed something about $47,000 savings. If we give everybody a dollar, all the residential customers, $3,066, 660-something, that comes to nearly $49,000 a year, that you would, we would be, our collection would be reduced. So it's, it's a hit and miss thing there, but I've been in several cities, and every city we've, we've done and changed from two to one, it's, after a couple weeks, everything's going fine, as long as you have the 95, 96-gallon containers out there. It's worked out fine in residential, every place I've ever been. I think it's something, I'd like to see the trial take place, you know, and then evaluate.
I think we've heard, we've heard conversations about efficiencies, we've heard citizens' comments about what their perceptions are and the reduction of services, and like all those things have been contemplated. But the beauty of a test run is just that, it's a test run, it's not permanent in nature. Gives you an opportunity to look and see if there are true cost savings, if there's some benefit. If there's not some benefit that can be identified and actually that's attainable, then you can move back to where you were. But I think for a 90-day period, it gives us an opportunity to do a couple of different things. The one thing I didn't hear, and that I'm hoping to hear, and it's kind of alluded to by Ms. Correa, is that we need to educate our citizens on what they need to do as far as recycling. And if we can continue to push efforts in that way, then we may find that if we begin to recycle more and educate them as to benefits of compost and some of these other ways in which we can start to save the environment, then we may see that some of those overflowing cans won't necessarily overflow in the same manner. What I'd also like for us to be able to do is to be able to provide some method when we have citizens who have special events or whatever, where they can, we can do it overflow. And we've done that and accommodated in several other ways. But I think a 90-day test run gives us the ability to look at it, to see if it's feasible, if it's something that's going to be viable from a fiscal standpoint. And then we can also go into the communities and start to look at metrics. You know, we can use Survey Monkey, some of these other things that are out there to get the attitudes of the citizens as it relates to what the process is after 30 days, so that we can actually come back and say, you know, 70% of the citizens are okay with the concept and how it's working thus far, or there's, you know, we've got 60% that's not, you know, everybody says it's Friday night and it's post-storm, people have been looking for somewhere to go to get up since they've been stuck in for six days and there's no football game. So this seems to be the hottest topic in town right now. I am, I am all for the trial run. Change is uncomfortable, but change is necessary. We can look at where we are from a cost-saving standpoint, to see if there's an opportunity to provide some greater savings to our citizens based upon what we get back from a metric standpoint. But I think initially for 90 days, it gives us an opportunity just to see where we are. And there are going to be some bumps in the road, and let's just see what comes up from there. That's my final comment at this time. Are there any more comments in the commission? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to motion that we propose an 90-day trial for once a week, garbage collection as proposed by Mr. Jonathan Britton.
Second. The motion for the second, for the discussion, seeing none, I'll call question. All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion carries unanimously. You got 90 days, sir.
We'll bring a plan to inform the citizens under administrative comments at the next city commission meeting.
Let's just make sure we give sufficient lag time for people to make their judgments. Moving forward to our final agenda item, that's going to be item number four, which is our opioid litigation agreement, authorization for execution of the agreement. I'm going to ask Mr. Greg Francis if he will come forward, counsel for Francis in Osborne. Thank you for coming in.
As excited as garbage pickup. Good evening, Mayor Hill and members of the commission. My name is Greg Francis of Osborne and Francis. I, my law firm, a law with a consortium of law firms, has banded together to file a lawsuit against the making of many opioid litigation, many opioid medications that have caused epidemic here in America. This, this type of, this opioid problem that we're dealing with has affected citizens throughout the United States, and not only individuals, but it affects the resources of the cities and municipalities. My consortium of law firms represents a number of cities and municipalities throughout the state of Florida, and we propose and we have provided a contingency fee agreement, meaning we don't, the city doesn't owe us anything unless we get a recovery. But this would be an attempt to recoup costs that are spent by, expended by the city in order, that are associated with opioid addiction. It would be a process of working with your city manager in order to gather some of that information. There's a plethora of different areas where cities and counties have had to expend monies as a result of this, this type of addiction, namely response to overdoses by emergency fire departments, as well as police departments, sometimes drug addiction clinics, sometimes there are child protective services involved in this. There's a number of things that we would like to investigate. But again, this is a, a contingency fee agreement that we are seeking in order to represent the city of Ocala. I can tell you that this is litigation that has been ongoing. It has been consolidated, it is not a class action, but there's something called multi-district litigation, where over 2,000 counties and cities across America have filed suit, and it's been all gathered together in Cleveland, Ohio, and the litigation has been moving forward or moving towards a potential trial date for what they would a potential trial date for what they would call bellwether trials, where the, these cases would be tried against Purdue Pharma and other defendants. The reason that time is of the essence now is that there has already been a discount that the federal judge has put in place in this case, meaning that if you were not a part of the litigation at a certain period of time, and that, that was about a month ago, that time period had passed, that your damages would be capped, or you'd have to take a fifteen percent discount on what the, the plaintiffs who were already involved in. We anticipate that the judge will again make some type of discount at some point in time. He's not given us a timeframe for that as of yet, but it is important to move forward with this potentially so that you have a seat at the table. You may have heard of litigation that some of the states have instituted, excluding the state of Florida. That is a totally separate litigation from the county and city litigation. And I think many of you may recall that many years ago, there was a tobacco litigation and then settlement. The counties and cities did not participate in that, the state did, and the state decided where the money went and who got what. This, by filing a lawsuit on behalf of the city of Palaca, will give you a seat at the table and an opportunity to have a say-so in any recovery that is obtained.
Any questions for, are there any questions for Attorney Francis at this point? Mr. Holmes, we have an opportunity to review the contingency fee agreement that was in place and also to make a determination as to how it would fit into any policies that we have.
I have, I have reviewed it. It's a relatively standard contingency fee agreement. Actually, the percentages are a bit less than what we customarily see in a standard personal injury contract, but, or standard personal injury contingency fee agreement, but that may be the norm in this particular environment. Ten percent of the gross amount of recovery if claims are settled prior to filing a complaint, twenty if things are settled prior to the first day of trial, twenty-two and a half if after trial on the merits, and twenty-five if after post-judgment appeal. Those are reduced from what I see in a conventional personal injury contract. But as I said, this isn't a conventional personal injury environment, and in, in this environment, this may be the norm. Otherwise, it, it does have the trappings of a normal contingency fee agreement in that the city does not pay the, any fee unless there is a recovery, and then the city's fee is limited to the percentage of the recovery that's applicable based upon the time and the process that the recovery occurs. So I have no, I don't see anything unusual or irregular about it.
Any other questions? Attorney Francis, I think I saw in the news recently, one phase had a five-hundred-and-eighty-five million dollar settlement that was out there. I want to say it was the number.
That, that was one of, I believe that was the lawsuit filed by the state of Oklahoma, and which they actually just completed a trial. So that was, that was probably the first case that the state that actually went to trial. We have a trial date of, I believe it's October for the first bellwether trial with, in terms of the cities and counties.
And typically, when you see those judgments out there, they create some incentive for people, for the, for the defendants in those cases to look at other alternative methods for dealing with certain issues that are present. So any other questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
So there, I have a speaker's card up there.
Ah, sure. You do have a speaker's card. Come on up and speak. I got you. Ms. Kitchens, we're going to now open the floor for public comment.
Thank you.
Took so long talking about garbage collection.
I know, I know. I was watching. I live for kitchens, ten twenty-seven South 12th Street, Palaca, Florida. I think that in the first place, suing the pharmacies because they produce painkilling drugs is about as stupid as suing the breweries because people become alcoholics, or suing car manufacturers because people get killed in car wrecks. But that's basically neither here nor there. I'd hate to see the city get involved in this kind of mess. The other thing is, you're talking about unknown fees to be paid to this attorney firm. You're talking about, you don't know how much money you're going to get. One of the first percentages Mr. Holmes mentioned was ten percent. Mr. Francis already said, if you don't do anything, you might get about fifteen percent of the settlement. So my deal is this, we have a darn good attorney. He's one of the best criminal attorneys in the state, I think. If he can't represent us, then I don't think we need anybody to represent us. I don't think we need to go in on this. We'll need to get rid of this. It may be from a legal standpoint, it may be fine. I personally wouldn't sign this contract if you paid me upfront on it. We have a darn good attorney. We have darn good liability insurance. We have a pen, and we know how to use all three of them. Please don't do this. Thank you.
Do you want to answer this, or you want me to?
Well, first of all, I tend to agree with her. Yeah, that was a judge.
Agree with, agree with the board.
Just as, just as before, she was talking about me. There may be a little bit of confusion about the, the percentages. The fee is ten percent of the amount of recovery. So whatever the recovery might be, if the city recovered a hundred thousand dollars, the fee is ten thousand dollars. At that level of the process, at that level is, I believe, prior to filing the complaint. So it wasn't what percentage you would get of the total recovery, it was what percent of fee would be paid to the firm from the total recovery the city got. And secondly, while I'm not going to profess to be an expert on this form of litigation, I have read a little bit about it. It was of interest to me when, probably a year, a year and a half ago, maybe even two, when I saw that the attorney who filed the first tobacco litigation lawsuit, I believe, as he was, I believe was attorney general for the state of Mississippi at the time, and he filed the first tobacco litigation, and it was laughed at. Basically, he was told that, that had no chance of being successful. And I saw where, as, as we all know, it was successful, it was very successful. I saw where he was taking up the issue of the opioid issues, and Ms. Kitchens, the, and I don't, again, I'm not trying to be an expert on this, give them off. But the contention was that the risks of addiction, as they were essentially explained by big pharmaceuticals, were very vastly understated. In other words, the, the picture that was sold to doctors, and you know far more than I do, but the picture that was sold to doctors and, and the public alike was, this stuff's safe. You know, the oxycontin and so forth, it's, it's, it's safe. It's not addictive, and I may be overstating to some degree. But the point was, and the point of these litigations, the point of these litigations is, look, you guys, you misled us. You told us this was a safe, a safe way for us to move forward. We could be fairly comfortable in prescribing these things on a fairly frequent basis, and that wasn't the truth at all. Now, if I misstated, then you, please correct me.
I think you very eloquently described exactly what has, has gone on in this. This is litigation with regard to failure to warn. These medications were manufactured, were produced and told to the physicians who were going to prescribe them as something that would be effective and effective long-term without any discussion about what the long-term effects would be, that you will build a resistance to this, that you will need more and more and more and more medication the longer you're on it. None of these things were discussed with the physicians when they were prescribing it, therefore the physicians prescribed it. There are also federal laws and rules that were violated by the distribution companies, excuse me. They're, they have a duty to monitor and identify if there is any, what appears to be over-medication or over-use of medications in areas. There are pill mills all over the United States that have popped up, that instead of the manufacturers and the distributors stepping forward and saying, listen, there's a problem here, there's not that many people here, to be sending this amount of drugs to this particular area, they just chose the profits over the patients and continued to prescribe the medications.
Cost-benefit analysis.
And finally, then while you're here so that you can add and maybe correct, my understanding was that the money was not just being, it wasn't going to be recovered by a municipality or a county or a state and then used for new swimming pools. It would be plowed back into programs that were designed to curb and/or treat addiction. I mean, if the idea was it would be, to the extent of some, in some fashion, to lessen the harm that had been caused. And so that's why when I, I read, and I read a little bit about it as time has gone by because I was interested to see where they, they made a big, I don't know if that was, that was a jury trial recovery, wasn't it?
It was.
I was interested to see that, you know, that they, it caused some traction, because if there's anyone in this room who doesn't think that there is a pill problem in this city, county, state, country, you're living in a different world than I'm living in.
So I think you guys have summed it up. Any, any further comments from the commission?
With that being said, I make my motion again. I approve.
Motion to approve. Second, attorney, further discussions? Seeing none, questions called? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Francis. I'll have you coordinate with Mr. Holmes. And now we are at the end of the road. We will have at this time our other business before, is there any other meetings at this time before the commission? Seeing none, we'll move into, we'll move to our report staff, reports, Chief Shaw. Got anything?
I just want to say thank you to you guys. We dodged a bullet last week, or over the weekend. Just like to thank you from my perspective for your support that we had, saw each and every one of you at the, at the EOC last week. Mr. Garner put in, I, I don't know how he did it, I mean, I saw that guy in there like thirty-six hours straight, but he did a great job. But I'd just like to say thank you. I mean, we dodged a bullet. Way to keep yourselves informed. I mean, it was really tough on us as staff to try to get all the information relayed out to you, but, but, but thank you for plugging yourselves in and just being involved in those decisions that had to be made. I'd like to say, we worked well with the county. I think it's relationships we've built over the time. Our input was very, very important. I think we made the right decisions. I mean, it was well thought out, so, but I'd just like to again say thank you for everything you guys did.
Thank you.
Point for everybody, I want to bring up Mr. Suggs at this time, county administrator, also on the knowledge, his lovely wife, lovely wife Julie. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely, and that's, that's why I'm here tonight. I was hoping to get here for a public comment. I apologize I was late. You know, we have an act, after event meeting today with the department heads about this on itself, and the overwhelming comment that was made over and over and over was the, just the way that communication flowed from the, from the EOC out to our citizens, and the amount of stakeholders that was in each one of those meetings and carried that back to respective teams. You know, you're right, Mr. Garner was there around the clock. Chief Grimes, Chief Shaw, their staffs, Jonathan, his staff. You know, it was great to have everyone in the room during the planning stage because that's what is most critical during the planning stage. We dodged a very good bullet this time, thank goodness. I will tell you that we were prepared. If we, if this, if this category four had hit us like they were talking about on Wednesday, we wouldn't be here tonight having this meeting, we'd be doing other things. But because of the way that everybody came together and participated, we were absolutely prepared to what was necessary. And I think a lot of the comments that were made, it was unprecedented with the amount of folks that attended those functions. And I just personally, as the county administrator, on behalf of Putnam County, want to thank each of you, as well as all the other municipalities that took the time to be there, to be informed and to be prepared. So thank you very much for that. And also, I was excellent, I was actually excited to be here tonight to hear Mr. Francis speak and hear, hear Mr. Holmes be, receive the accolades he deserves as being the best criminal attorney in the state.
Same.
I would say the contrary, but that's just me, though. But anyway.
That's still seven children, both.
I will say that it's an epidemic that's not just touched, you know, Putnam County has touched everyone. And if you don't believe it, I mean, we're having to stop, kids are getting now on, on all of our vehicles, all our fire and mess vehicles because of it. And so we definitely need to do something to, to curtail that. And I think actually, if we can get some funding back from those events, that can actually put in place some programs to assist with that, I think it's even better. But my, first and foremost, I'm here just to thank you for your participation this past week, and it was good seeing all of you. Felt like a whole week, I'll be honest with you. One thing I remember is that we're all family, and family gets to poke fun and have a little joke, count with each other, and no one enjoyed that more than J.R. Grimes. So, but yes, so thank, yes.
And, and Mr. Suggs, having an opportunity to see really kind of the evolution of emergency operations under your leadership with the county, after being the city manager for a couple of years, we just want to thank you for the lead that you took in this, the role that you played, the ability to provide the camaraderie and the unity within the organization to create a pretty strong environment. It was beyond measure, the professionalism, the ability to include municipalities in the conversation. We appreciate your work and your efforts, and for that, we give you kudos.
Thank you. We represent the city as well. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it, and here's the reason for that. It wasn't a drum deal I was sitting where Mr. Garner was sitting when we had a hurricane early hit us, and a lot of, a lot of things were asking and requesting, sometimes weren't being heard, and not, not at the fault or expense of anybody else. It was just a different type of management style over there. One thing I said when I left here with your blessing was that we would always partner and work together and remember where we came from, and we haven't forgotten that promise. It's been two years, but we're still doing that. So I thank you all for, for helping out, we serve here, but now we'll serve there, but also continuing the relationship we've seen here. Thank you very much.
Not just the municipalities that we had local, but it was good to see that we partnered with state officials from all across, to be, to have them here in Putnam County, ready to be activated when they needed to.
And federal.
And federal. It really showed the effort that was, that was put into making sure that Putnam County bounced back as fast as possible or as quick as possible after the storm. So that, that really did, my heart's good to see how we have people from all across the state ready to be activated.
One of the things we did, Commissioner, was as soon as we went into our partial activation, we started reaching out and making those requests through the state D E M and in the federal, and that made a big difference because we were first in line, and we got the services that we requested, and you could tell that made a big difference. So, absolutely.
I'm also extremely proud of, you know, the overall collaboration and coordination for all of the, all of the various agencies. I mean, I just took a list of some of the ones that were there. I mean FEMA, State Troopers, Palaca Housing Authority, School District, Chamber, Health Department, Army Reserve, Florida Power and Light, Clay Electric, Rise Solutions, F D E M, F D O T, Regional Fire Rescue from Sarasota, Department of Health, Horizon. We had Clay Electric, we had all of these agencies there at our disposal so that we could take care of the people that we serve. So, I mean, I can't say enough of how happy I am about the, the support that we had, that we needed. And also, the mayor mentioned that he had a special person to call him, and he, I'm gonna let him share that, and I won't spill his beans.
Senator Rick Scott gave me some call. He called me on my cell to ask, was there an opportunity to provide resources to, to Putnam County? But I think overall, we just saw that there were so many agencies and relationships that we've built over the last few storm incidents have allowed us to be able to, to kind of streamline the process, and the remarks that came from folks who do this on a regular basis as to what the Putnam process was, really made us realize that we are prepared for the storm incidents as they come, and it's just a matter of making sure that we continually get that message out to the citizens.
Well, one thing that we did at the county is I moved my time management team from, from the administrative office up to the EOC. So if there was an issue that arose or a need, we had the folks in place, the tech center right then, and then have you folks involved and everyone else that was involved. It just made it a very successful pre-storm event, and one that we were very prepared for if we had an issue. Again, just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the citizens of Putnam County and our residents, and that you all deserve kudos as well, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
I'd like to say one quick comment. This is not my personal ode to you, but I'll tell you what, the cooperation and the operation that the people in Putnam County have as an EOC, it, it is on par with the state EOC and the cooperation and coordination that were there and all the people in there. We were prepared for five of whatever. It, we were prepared for five of whatever was going to come in here, we were ready to tackle it, but, and also thank. Good to eat. I've got the spirits of five. But anyhow, I, I just want to say thank you to everybody who was there and not only your staff, but our staff completely.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I know, I, I need to make one more comment too. Like I said, it's very important that we recognize those folks that helped us get the word out, which is our, our crim media.
Yes.
Our radio, you know, our Facebook folks. And we appreciate everybody that played a very vital role in this and, and camera readers and, and everybody, you know, informing of all that's going on, so thank you all for that as well.
And all our radio stations.
And as you take your seat, Mr. Griffin, you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Campbell for taking the lead on keeping the public informed about the state of bridge closure.
I got, I have a question. Commissioner Campbell, is the bridge?
The bridge is closed.
I've got to leave. So the bridge will close November, the bridge will close on February thirtieth. Ms. Robinson, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Does that look around the room? Ms. Becker, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Ms. Driggers.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Holmes. Commissioner Borum.
Just happy to be here.
He's happy.
That's it.
He can sleep in private a few days. Commissioner McCaskill.
Happy to be here also, whoever made it safely through it.
Yep.
Mr. Campbell, the bridge will not.
Oh, my God.
Vice Mayor.
Let's wait tonight.
And so in closing, I want to make sure that we again thank the most important people in this entire equation. That's our first responders, Chief Shaw and the police department, Chief Grimes, fire department efforts that you had, also our public works department and the efforts that were put together coordinating services, making sure we had resources in place and the staffing efforts that were there. Ms. Becker, with the work that you did as far as getting payroll out pre-storm to make sure those things were done. Ms. Driggers, who has been now designated our public information officer of storm relations and also Mr. Garner, who as a teenager was out there every, for thirty-six straight hours at one point until we were like, you gotta go home, we'll relieve you. But I, but overall, I think the city of Palaca served well in this, during the storm. Ms. Rob, Ms. Robinson also worked on payroll and I think the city of Palaca served well in various capacities. Our staff just went beyond the call of duty to make sure we were prepared. We were blessed not to have the impacts that were anticipated. One of the things that I want us to do, when we look out, our hearts have to go out to the Grand Bahamas and the Bahamas Islands as a whole. I want the city of Palaca to take the lead of this community in gathering of resources. And I think one of the various we have, when they, when they, when the situation came up with Puerto Rico, I think one of the regrets that I have is that we didn't do it then, but I want us to take the lead and, and start to gather resources. In Orange Park, they've got a, they've got a shipment going out on the eighteenth and I want us to be able to set up a location where we can gather resources for the storm victims and get some stuff over to the Bahamas. Chief.
My boss, it is clear on Monday, we can get a loan in up to Monday. So we need Chief Ross to set up resources to gather, get it working, you can get it.
Okay, so we can do that by Monday? So, so let's go. Next week, Monday through Friday, let's go ahead and gather resources. If anybody from the community who wants to donate, they can, they can bring that, they can bring that over to the, to the city police department and we'll make those efforts. We're also looking at opportunities for mutual aid to be able to go over and help out as well. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just asking, is it better to bring money or items or funding or what?
Items, what we'll do is we'll get a, we'll put out a, an information piece, hopefully we can get a newspaper on board with that and also we'll put it on our website as to what things are necessary and the radio, as to what things are there and necessary for us to get this information out. So we'll use all our video outlets to get it out to the community.
And now in the past, a lot of people, a lot of this is tossed away because that's not what they need. And all this stuff gets there.
That's really a big point because I remember, I don't know if it was the VI, when the hurricane went through there, people gathered gallons and gallons of water and they wouldn't accept it for various reasons. So it is going to be important for us to figure out what we can get on boats and.
They've got a list, they actually have a list of the stuff. What we'll do is we'll publish that in various places, including social media outlets to make sure everybody's informed. And so by Monday, we'll have that communication out to the masses so that we can make sure that we're all on the same page.
Right, okay. Long as we on the same page.
Chief.
If you just for the record, if they want to call our fire stations, three two nine zero one two zero is a non-emergency line and I'll inform our staff, we'll have, we'll have a place set out for them to be open.
Good idea.
Should we wait until Monday to put it out once we have?
We'll put information out prior to Monday, we'll start collecting on Monday.
Okay.
With that, we're done.